All right. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Pittsboro Town Board of Commissioners. With this February 26, 2018. As we normally do, we'll begin our meeting with a moment of clapping. Thank you very much. We have a special treat tonight for the Pledge of Legion. And I wanted to introduce you all to one of Pittsboro's elder citizens. And his name is Hubert Caddell. And I'm not sure, but would it be all right if we talked about how old you are? Would it be all right if I told these folks how old you are?
Oh, yeah.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three.
And we met just by telephone. And I invited Hubert Caddell to come tonight and lead us in the Pledge of Legion. It also happens that we have two scouts with us.
Outstanding.
And so we're going to hear from the oldest part of the generation and the youngest part.
You want them up to your booth?
Yes. And so Andrew Trotter and his brother Anthony Trotter, they have been with us before, but they are working on their citizenship and the community badge.
Outstanding.
And so it's the three of you will step here and turn around and lead us in the pledge, and that will just be it.
United. All right. I'd like to witness the flag of the United States of America. And we are a body of workers standing. One nation, under God, indivisible, the living, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Is that all right?
Yes. But I wanted to tell you a little bit about Hubert Caddell. And he wants to tell you a little bit about himself. But one of the wonderful things about him is that he is a citizen of Chatham County, of Pittsboro now. For how long have you been living with us here?
About since the Fourth of July.
Since the Fourth of July. And he lost his wife last year. She and he were married for 69 wonderful years. And he has children in the area. He served in the Army Air Corps in the Pacific Theater, in the Liberator Group. Is that?
In the V-24 Liberator, which takes 10 men to fly and fight.
And served in Hawaii.
I did.
As a tank gunner, is that correct?
Yeah, turret gunner.
Turret gunner. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
He lived in Florida and in Thomasville. And when he retired, he retired as a Navy civilian. So he has dedicated a major part of his life to our country. So he's asked if he could say a few words tonight to you all to tell you about himself. And I explained to him that we have a long agenda, but I'm sure that you're as charmed by this gentleman as I am, and that we wouldn't mind hearing a little bit about what brought him to Pittsboro.
Thank you. And I didn't know that I was going to be the entertainment presenter. I will say that I'm so pleased to be here in this nice town of -- where are we in? And I'm so -- I enjoy it, and I wish I could have been here sooner. And since I lost my wife, I've been grieving about that for the past year. And nonetheless, I came here to Pittsboro, and everybody's been so good. In the grocery store, in the credit union, and in the -- wherever I go, people are good. I have this hat that says Veteran of World War II. Hey, tell you what, that makes a world of difference. People come up and speak to me about that. So I'm not the only Caddell here. My daughter helped me come here. My daughter is Patricia Caddell. She is an ordained minister, and she has been a chaplain in the oncology hospital in Chapel Hill. And now she is with hospice as a chaplain. And I'm probably very proud of her, and she got the company here. But the other Caddell, you might all know him, Caden Cooper. He is my barber, your barber, maybe. And when I found out that he took my name, but it wasn't, it was some preacher from way back when that he took his first name. And so we're friends now. And he was in your government not too long ago, I'm sure. I forget what his school was.
He was on the school board.
The school board, okay. But he's a fine gentleman, and I'm glad that he is here. Everywhere I go, I get compliments for having served, and I am so pleased. And I understand that your agenda tonight is going to be involved with your growing. Now, I don't mean to infringe upon you, but you understand that vigor is not always matter.
Yeah.
But when you work on this, make sure that you understand what you're doing. And when you get your people there, and the population grows, and a man from Raleigh comes and says, "Here's your city charter." Wow. Then it's the time that you have to work to stay as nice as Pittsboro is. Nice place. Thank you so much. And I love all of you.
And as we grow, we're trying to do our best job we can. You're welcome to stay with us as long as you.
Well, I think I'm home. I'm glad you're not struggling.
Not at all. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for asking.
Do we have your agenda before you? Is there a motion that needs to be made to either approve the agenda or to modify it in some fashion?
Mr. Mayor, you had several items regarding the minutes.
Yes.
One of which coincided with my interest in taking a word. And it is the second-to-last word in Karen Paul's commentary about creating a park. And I believe she said linear park, and we've got lunar, so it's on. I think she wants it in Pittsboro.
Well, maybe the moon will shine well upon the park. The -- yes, there are corrections to the February 12 minutes, and those are at your death. And if we incorporate those, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. As to the balance of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the balance of the agenda?
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. So that's the end of our consent agenda, and our next matter is citizens' matters. We have four people signed up to speak this evening. And if you'll come to the podium and state your address, and then give your remarks in approximately three minutes, we would greatly appreciate it. If you have written remarks, you're more than welcome to give them to the town clerk, who will receive them and incorporate them into the minute. The first person signed up is William Trimmer.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the time for talk, and I see my comments very, very brief. We saw a plan for housing development next to Powell Park. I don't know exactly where that is in the process. I think a number of people here have concerns about that, and I'd like to just outline one of -- a couple of my particular concerns. I think there are safety issues involved with the way things are structured right now, that hopefully, as it goes through your planning process, and I'd like to learn more about your process, we can work things out so things work better. First safety issue is there's only one entrance into the Powell Place. And this proposes putting, I think, 325 new residences in there. It's share a road that already is flawed and dangerous, and I'll talk about that in just a second. The second issue is that road -- I'm sorry, I'm talking in front of a bunch of people. I know the name of the road.
Millbrook Lane.
Millbrook Lane. And it's a very narrow road. Right now is something that I think needs to have help. I was almost hit there. I was there, and some truck came along, stopped about this far away from me, and just totally destroyed my car, and I don't know what he had done to me. And to put an extra 300, 400, 500 cars through there, I think also is my concern. I think there's an easy solution to this. If there's a talk about putting in a new hotel right in that area, they're going to have an entrance. And if that entrance continues on into this new development, I think that one takes the pressure off that road, which should happen. And two, it allows safety vehicles to get in there. So thank you very much. I appreciate you giving me the chance to talk tonight.
Thank you, William Trimmer. Judy Bensley. Judy has cast out the map. Thank you, Judy.
This is a simple, pretty crude map, but it shows Powell Place. And following up on what Bill said, over here you can see the main entry. There is a second little entry that comes in, but this is the main entry that comes in. There's one first roundabout, there's a second one. And then that darker blue in the center is the Millbrook bottleneck. It's a narrow road. There are a lot of problems, a lot of people have talked about before. These areas coming down with the whiter blue, the one on the right is Haven Creek, which runs down and under Powell Place Lane coming into the neighborhood. The one further up to the left is a live stream that comes down to just to the west of the Powell Springs Apartments and leads into the western part of the development. The red dot is where the developer recently put a traffic counter. The lavender dot below it, closer to the roundabout, is the head of the bottleneck. And then the golden road, yellow brick road there, is what Bill just talked about, the possibility of putting a road directly from the first roundabout on Powell Place Lane up to the apartment site. So let me read what I was going to say here. Basically requesting that the town require adequate safe access to the proposed new apartment complex development. And there are well-known problems with the traffic on Millbrook. Neighbors have told me they can't safely back out of their driveway. They tell guests they park on Millbrook at their own risk. A woman who lives right at the roundabout told me that she has witnessed numerous near accidents there, and has seen people more than once climb out of their car to confront and yell at each other. I personally witnessed a volatile incident in which a driver got out and screamed at a contractor who had pulled over momentarily because he couldn't find an address. So the developer is well-known, knows these issues really well, since he served as the HOA president for the past year, and has seen people bring these issues to the HOA. And nevertheless, is willing to put approximately 500 more cars onto this already problematic stretch of road. Recently, the developer placed a traffic counter on Millbrook at the proposed entry into the apartment site to submit with their application. That's the little red dot up there. However, this placement ensured that it only counted the traffic coming into and out of the far western end of the neighborhood, and missed approximately 100 additional homes, the Danbury Town Homes, and then these two cul-de-sacs, and more traffic on Millbrook that emptied onto Millbrook and had no other entry-exit point. So we're asking the town to do a thorough traffic impact study of Millbrook and the other Powell Place roads. Also, we request that the town work with the developer on the option of adding a new direct access road from the first Powell Place Lane roundabout up through their hotel site across -- it would have to cross Haven Creek up at the very top of the property there, and would go directly into this apartment site. This would require building a bridge over Haven Creek and its stream buffer, which I believe regulations do allow if there's no reasonable alternative. This would greatly reduce the additional traffic congestion on Millbrook and provide access to construction vehicles. The developer's first sentence in the Powell Place, covenants and restrictions, which all of us residents are strictly held to. If you have moss on your front lawn, you will probably get a letter. And that's for the benefit of the neighborhood, but they're very strict covenants. And the developers originally, when they formed this neighborhood, said that their highest goal for Powell Place was to, quote, "preserve the attractiveness and functionality of the neighborhood." So we believe that this apartment development, unless there's better access, will fail on both counts, and will prove destructive to the neighborhood, that they have this positive legacy of building. So we're hoping that the current attractiveness and functionality of our beautiful neighborhood here in Bedford Falls will not be turned into Puttersville. And we appreciate any help that you can offer us. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy Bensley.
Last week, we had a gentleman speak on that road for possibly being built by the developer. Has anybody sent this to the developer?
I talked to Barbara Holmes about that, and he said that it wasn't possible.
It was not possible.
So we're asking the town to maybe talk with him and explore the possibility.
Okay, thank you.
We were also told by the developer that this was a done deal, but we would think that until the town has approved it, it might not be.
Jeff, I've got a question. I don't know if you know the answer. Do you know if Haven Creek is a perennial stream or intermittent?
I don't remember. It's an intermittent.
According to the statistics, there weren't any.
There weren't any in there. Go ahead.
Excuse me. They did build the bridge right over -- Powell Place Lane crosses Haven Creek. It continues underneath Powell Place Lane, so that road goes right across it. Further up, you can see that blue line coming down. That is another live stream in Wetlands that has a protected stream buffer, and that is crossed by a road and a bridge, and it goes into the whole western Cobble Ridge part of the neighborhood.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Bonnie Thompson.
Wait, yeah, we'll keep this up here. I'm Bonnie Thompson, and I live on Millbrook. My husband and I, we moved there five months ago. We had no idea this was going to be happening. If you look at that parcel, and the size of that parcel, and understand that that butts right up against Powell Spring, which is also an apartment, three-story apartment building, you can see that the sheer scale of this thing. So Powell Place, as it exists right now, has something in the vicinity -- I don't have the exact number of 350 residences. This apartment complex, with 264 apartments, in one stroke, is going to now occupy like two-thirds of the total number of residences in Powell Place. It's enormous. It will be the biggest thing there. So it's huge. It's 10 buildings. They're three stories tall. And I just want to build on what Judy said. We've been talking about the traffic thing. I think everyone's gotten that picture. What's hard to understand is the developers, when I asked them about this, is that complex is going to be pretty self-contained. They've got a pool, and a clubhouse, and a gym. Those amenities are not available to Powell Place. That's just for them. So they're building this huge thing in Powell Place, but it's not really going to be of Powell Place. It's not going to be part of our community. And so I understand, if they were going to have to accommodate us, they'd have to make a much bigger clubhouse, a much bigger swimming pool, a much bigger gym, to allow 500 more people to go in there. Well, the reverse is true. They want to build that and have all that, and also have access to our sidewalks, our streets, our parks. And honestly, we live right on Millbrook in that front section. We live without traffic. I cannot imagine that many more people coming and going down that road. So the thing that makes the most sense to me and a lot of people is this other way in. I would even say, I mean, I don't know if it's possible, not even to have an access on the Millbrook, unless it's really like an emergency way for people to get in and out, I don't know. It is an enormous project. And if you look at Powell Spring, which is next to it, which is one building, and multiply that 10 times, that's what's going to go in there. I don't know what the name of this apartment complex is going to be, but we might as well just rename the whole neighborhood after it, because really, it will be the dominant feature. So what -- those of us who live in Powell Place, we love Powell Place, would love to see is some consideration for the fact that the infrastructure is not there to support this thing. It's simply not there. And I don't know how that can be remotely accepted with another entrance. The last point I want to make about this, apartments, just by their nature, it tends to be more transient community, and there's nothing wrong with that. I've lived in apartments more than half my life. That isn't the issue. The issue is that when you have a more transient community of 264 units, the prospect of moving trucks in and out all the time really escalates. So I just want to leave these thoughts with all of you. Come on forward, and I thank you for listening and for considering Judy's wonderful artwork and for our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie Thompson. And the last speaker is Karen Baldwin.
I wish I had some nice artwork up there, too, but I do not. One item that I just quickly wanted to address, I don't know when you were doing your consent agenda, but I read through your minutes, and you might have made this correction, but Efrain's name is E-F-R-A-I-N. There's not an M in it when he spoke, and I think it meant to say John Foley was now the chair of Fort Valdez, not John Wilson. I'm sure you made that, but I wasn't sure. So I have quickly these items that were passed at the Pittsboro Precinct meeting on February 17. That's going to go to the county Democratic Convention, but these are all public policy. They're not resolutions that would go on to the congressional district or the state. They just really have to do with Chatham County and Pittsboro. And so I gave each of you a copy, and I wanted to put them on the record. The first one had to do with mixed-use development in the Main Street District. Whereas the Pittsboro Downtown Vision Plan was conceived as the next building block in the downtown revitalization of the county seat, and was unanimously endorsed by the Pittsboro Town Board on June 16, 2014. And whereas the plan is being used as one of the guiding documents for Main Street Pittsboro. And whereas the Pittsboro Downtown Vision Plan will enhance the pedestrian safety, provide more vitality, and in result, create a more robust downtown commerce environment for retailers, that will create jobs and increase sales tax revenue to the town of Pittsboro and County. Therefore, be resolved that the Chatham County Democratic Party respectfully requests that the Chatham County Board of Commissioners work with the town of Pittsboro and Main Street Pittsboro to implement the Downtown Vision Plan. And further be resolved that as the town and county consider plans and redevelopment in the Main Street District, that mixed-use options be considered with an emphasis toward more residential units, including affordable housing such as apartments and/or condominiums being constructed in the district that are walkable to Hillsborough Street. So essentially, I think you're aware that the county has put out a -- has signed an actual contract to reconceive of their area by the annex downtown. In that document, there's no mention of having the architect look at residential options. So we're just requesting, and I'm going to send a copy of this to the county commissioners, that perhaps that you would send a note, that it would be nice if they studied that. Because if we're going to get walkable units downtown, we're going to have to look at where to build them, and perhaps on some of the areas that the county has or could have, might make sense to explore. At the very least, to get input from the architect that's studying this. The second item has to do with the Main Street overlay district. I won't read the first couple whereas's because they're the same, but the third is that the Pittsboro Downtown Vision Plan contemplates a more unified and coherent long-term plan for the Main Street District that may conflict with some of the potential uses by right of the current Pittsboro zoning ordinance. Therefore, be resolved that the Chatham County Democratic Party respectfully requests that the town of Pittsboro work with Main Street Pittsboro and other stakeholders to craft and implement with all due speed a reasonable Main Street overlay zoning district that will protect the property values of parcels in the district and allow policymakers the ability to approve uses in the district that are in accordance and/or spirit of the Downtown Vision Plan. And again, Mayor Perry was at this meeting. We didn't get -- most of the people thought that this was a good idea. Obviously, we know that the situation with Eagles is kind of pushing this, but frankly, there's a lot of other potential cases that could come before you. And I think that there's a will to try to find a way to work with the existing property owners, as well as get a pathway to this overlay district. The third item has to do with the growth in Pittsboro and Chatham County. So I just pulled the most recent voter registration from the Board of Elections that they had today, so you may or may not be aware, but Pittsboro Precinct, once again, has the most people in the county. So we've been neck and neck with Mans Chapel due to Briar Chapel growth, but we're now almost at 7,000 in the precinct. This is just registered voters, mind you, so we know a lot more people actually live in Pittsboro in the precinct. In fact, we are now 4.5% bigger than East and West Siler City combined, and we're 2.5% bigger than Mans Chapel. So it begs the question about looking at potentially splitting the Pittsboro precinct or studying this. And this resolution, I'll just read the resolve, is that we respectfully request that Chatham County Board of Commissioners work with the town of Pittsboro and the Board of Elections to study the current precincts in Chatham County and make the appropriate adjustments to ensure that access to the ballot box on Election Day remain as easy and efficient as possible. I think that if you guys could start the process now, as we see the growth that we're going to be having over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, the future voters will thank you if we do this now. And that may include splitting the precinct as it was about 10 or 15 years ago. I think Mayor Perry probably remembers when there wasn't East and West Pittsboro, and we had a lot less people back then. The last item has to do with expansion of the county Board of Commissioners. And I think that Siler City may be taking this up at their work session tomorrow. One of their commissioners, Mike Constantino, talked to me today about it. But whereas Chatham County continues to grow, and whereas the growth dictates that county commissioner districts are out of balance, and will continue to be out of balance in a growing and changing Chatham County, and whereas the method and system of electing county commissioners was last adjusted in our local bill over 40 years ago. was last adjusted in our local bill over 40 years ago and the current districts were drawn in 2012, therefore be resolved that the Chatham County Democratic Party respectfully requests that the Chatham County Board of Commissioners place a referendum on the ballot in 2018 to expand the Board of Commissioners to seven members with at least two of the members elected at large and appoint a task force immediately to evaluate methods of election, evaluate the current precinct configuration, prepare for the redistricting that will need to be done after the 2020 census, and study the feasibility of having the school board districts match the county commissioner districts. Now, you may ask why I provided this to you since this is a county commissioner issue. Again, I'm going to tell you that there has been no member of this board, or no, no member of the county commissioners who lived in Pittsboro for at least 20 years. And actually, Mary Hayes Homes and Betty Wilson didn't live in the city limits. They lived in our ETJ. So with that criteria, I can't even find when the last person who actually lived in Pittsboro served on the board. In Siler City, the last person was Henry Dunlop, who has a beautiful building named after him in Pittsboro, and John Grimes. So with all the growth that you're going to see in Pittsboro north to Briar Chapel, it just makes sense that the towns actually advocate for some methodology to give some flexibility because your districts or their districts are never going to be in balance. Currently, District One has nearly twice as many voters as District Five, and that's registered voters. And that's before we get to a census. And of course, if we looked at the census data, you're going to find something similar, but that's just looking at registered voters. So my request to you, or at least this is a request coming from the, from the precinct, is I would hope that the town would weigh in and say, it makes sense to study this and it makes sense to look at expanding the board. So if you have any questions, please fire away. If not, I will send these to Allison so that she can place them appropriately in the record. And I appreciate your time.
Randy, you said that if the precinct or the, these resolutions were passed?
They were passed at the precinct meeting and then from there, they'll go to the county convention where I anticipate there'll be little resistance. They'll pass there. They're, they're at the Resolutions Committee. I'm the sixth congressional district resolution rep for the Democratic Party. So anything that becomes, that goes all the way to DC comes to me and we have a meeting, but these are all local issues. They're never going to go beyond the county convention. So I imagine, once it's passed, it'll come back here and I'll say they passed it. So at least you know that these folks met and endorsed this. But I haven't really found a lot of resistance. I know that former Commissioner Bach was against the board expansion and he put it in the paper, but I think there's good in arguments that the board should be expanded. And that discussion has been going on for at least 15 years. As long as I can remember, people have talked about it. Lee County has seven members. Orange County has seven members. Lee is smaller than us. I mean, with the workload and with the imbalance in the districts, it makes sense to get ahead of the curve again before we have 80, 90, 100,000 people here and districts that are two or three times the size of others. And the only way around it is to study this and make a move. And the precinct is even worse. If we end up with 10,000 people in the precinct, Election Day is going to be just as bad as the ladies were saying about driving on Millbrook Road. And I don't think anyone wants to make, you know, voting a hassle. Voting should be easy and efficient and something that everyone, when they want to vote, they should be able to go right up and do it and not be lined up into the parking lot.
Thank you, Randy. Our next item is Commissioner--
Randy, I have one little comment on this. Thank you, Randy. As a, I am a registered Democrat here in Pittsboro. But my question is, this is being brought up by the Chatham County Democratic Party and we are supposed to be a nonpartisan board. Are we going, are we just representing one side of the party line? Are we just representing Democratic Party and not Republican and not the independent? Where are we going with this? I mean, does it sound like to me that we're covering everybody in the same order?
Commissioner Farrell, I can answer that question. If, if they have brought up the same issue at their convention, so there's no unaffiliated convention, unfortunately. Obviously, the unaffiliated voting bloc is about 35% of the county now, although folks lean one way or the other. But if the Chatham County Republican Party wanted to come forth with a public policy issue, they could do so and would be invited to do so. So they may have a different take on those four items or they may have no take. The only one I'm aware of is the board expansion one. The Main Street, Pittsboro ones, I haven't had anyone in town tell me that they were against having a study and work together on things downtown or look at the overlay. And the, and the precinct issue is something that affects everybody. That's just a voting issue regardless of voter affiliation. It's just access to the ballot box.
Thank you. So with respect to Commissioner Updates, this is a time when we talk about what it is that we've done in the community and the associations and commissions that we serve on. I have been continuing my weekly meetings with Brian Gruzbeck, the town manager, on the 13th. I had my monthly call with the climate mayors. And that's a conference call that is all over the United States. On the 15th, I attended a One Water Meeting in Chapel Hill. On the 19th, we had an all-day retreat at the Agriculture Building. On the 22nd, I met with constituents in the ETJ regarding a zoning violation. And on the 24th, walked in the Unity Prayer Walk here in Pittsboro. We were supposed to have a field trip today to the, to the Waste Industries Plant, which you've got to admit just sounds very inviting and exciting. But, but between the rain and the fact that Commissioner, that Wilson Foley was not well, we decided to postpone our exciting field trip to the recycling function. So are there updates from the commissioners on Pittsboro Business Association or Triangle J, Main Street or Climate Change?
Well, there have not been meetings since our last meeting. So I can tell you though, the upcoming meeting, the EDC will meet Tuesday, March 13th at 8:00 AM. That's at the Ag Center. Main Street, there are two meetings coming up next week. One is Wednesday, March 7th, and that is the full Main Street Committee meeting. And then following that, Thursday, March 8th, is the Design Committee where we will be pursuing the overlay district that we've been working on for the last couple months.
Anything else? Climate change or--
The meeting will be this week. I can report.
Triangle J, the meeting will be Wednesday. And if anyone has anything they'd like to move to suggest, I'd be more than happy to bring it up. So of course, Triangle J, with different county commissioners and town municipalities and we exchange ideas as well. There are a lot of things which are going on that we discuss in those particular meetings. And they are actually open to others as well. I attended a Heritage Gala on the 24th and folks on behalf of the mayor--
The mayor's guy.
Which was for the Boys and Girls Club of Siler City, which is really going very, very well. They have a lot of different interesting things that the children do. They have after-school programs and different fine arts-type programs. Arts programs itself, though, that is really a good program. And the director was saying that he hopes to bring one to Pittsboro. So those were some things I see this week.
Great. Anything else? In the launch into old business, we first have a site plan review of the cottages. Victoria Vela, our assistant planner, will be leading us through the presentation.
Thank you. Site Plan 2017-08. Chatham Park Investors have submitted plans for approval. The site is located in the Chatham Park EDD on parcel 7386 and 7372, north of Thompson Street and just east of Pittsboro Fire Tower Road. The proposal is to construct 30 single-family residences or cottages made up of three different types of units. Type A units will be 2,000 square feet with attached garages and individual driveways. The smaller units, types B and C, will utilize two communal parking lots located on opposite ends of the four-block, 12-acre site. These are some conceptual building elevations that have been provided, just to give you a general idea. The planning board reviewed these plans at their meeting on February 5th and recommended approval and a vote of plac to zero. The plans for the site have been reviewed in accordance with the town's applicable development ordinances by the appropriate department and status recommending approval of the request.
Questions from the board? The next agenda item addresses the issue of sewer allocation. So, so we need not ask about that at this time. But I continue to be concerned about the traffic flow in and out regarding, this is directly adjacent to Thales Academy. Is the, is the, is the plan sufficient to be able to handle that kind of flow? Because I, I, I know there's going to, there's no public transportation to that school. So there are no school buses coming in and out. It's all parent-driven. So in two years from this school is up and running, are we going to be able to handle that kind of traffic?
Well, Thales does have a long drive in and out. So I wouldn't be too concerned about, you know, the traffic back up on the road. But I'm a transportation engineer, so I'll let that happen.
Good evening, Robbie Odenworth of Trevinale. I would just point out the fact that we did a TIA last summer, I believe, that included the Thales Academy, the cottages, basically the 600 lots. It included more, it included like, I think 900 to 1,000 lots. That TIA was reviewed by the town's traffic consultant and we addressed some concerns of that. And I'm sure Mr. Jones can verify that or talk to that. So I would just say that that's being taken into account. And I think the key, regardless of that, I think the key is that there will be a second connection to the north and now to Chatham Parkway with the extension of Bond Parkway as well as Windsor Avenue.
Thank you, Robbie.
Couple of questions. Noticing on two locations, there is a proposal for two on-street parking spaces, which looks suspiciously like bus turnouts in the future. Is that what is being conceived or why are these two on-street parking spaces being put in?
We've got locations, I think it's three locations where we've got some street parking.
Oh, I see three down--
Yeah, that, that's just to provide some additional street parking. So that's not, there's been no discussion or thought that we would turn that into bus parking right now. I mean, we would look at that in the future. Provide some additional transit. But that is just to provide straight parking. We will, yeah, and more. It'd be nice to provide more street parking in some areas, but then you get in the side distance and you're restricted on where you can put it, so.
I remember there was a question about transit when the other parcels subdivision came in. And there was, at that time, mention of, we'll be looking at after cottages. And so when I saw these parking spaces, they're, I think, what? 24 feet long. So there's two of those and then there's like a four-foot space between them. And they sure look like bus turnouts to me. But you're telling me that's not, that's not bus--
That is not the intent of this plan right here. Not to say that we will not come back and look. The area that we were, we were looking at doing like a bus or transit stop was rather weird, which I can easily convert to what you're saying. But right now, they are sized to four parallel parking, four just regular parallel parking.
I don't know, actually. I've talked about it on all the buses. But I mean, you've got 52 feet. Seems like they could accommodate buses. Are these for sale? These units?
Yes.
So are they condominiums?
They will be set up as far as the site itself will be set up as a condominium and not a single-family lots. So we have talked about that internally, but I'm probably in the street we can speak to that a little bit. But they will be set up as a condominium.
So the folks will own the structure.
Correct.
Will they own any land underneath it?
No. It's all a big, like a condominium. Common maintenance, common landscape.
Right. Is there any phasing to this development or will all of these homes go up at once?
The site plan will be done at once. As far as the homes, it's market-driven.
We'll start with one and build as fast as they can sell. But it's not going to be built for multi-year. Hopefully, we'll sell it out pretty fast. It's only a, a--
Two technical questions. I noticed the, there's a fire hydrant close to Unit 53B. And I noticed the grass paved product, which is a way to, for grass to support the fire engine when it has to get into someplace. So I think it's a great product. It looks great and no one knows that it's really quite structural. But I'm wondering, does the grass pave need to go up to that hydrant? Because I don't know how else that, that hydrant's about 100 feet away from the grass pave.
We can look at that with a CNS. And just to give a background, we met early on with Mr. Brenderin, Mr. Rippon, and talked about this. But they gave some examples to look at, some other places in the county. But that's a good point. We can look at it with the construction plans. And they've looked at the plan that's signed off on it, but I mean, that's, that's, that's a good question.
Because it's about 100 feet away. And I, you know, they usually like to be closer than that. How is storm one handling itself with--
With the BMP at the entrance that was approved with the previous subdivision plan? It's basically regional BMP, as you know. So all that is taken into account.
For the size for this, this level of purpose--
Absolutely. Actually, maybe even more.
General question about development is high-speed internet. Recently been a business that opened within Chatham Park and they're complaining that they don't have it. And I'm very interested in remedying that situation. So how do, how do these homes? Is, is high-speed capacity being installed in the new roads that get in trouble? And if so, why is it that this new business can't seem to get it?
We have signed a contract with a major carrier that hasn't been announced yet. We've been working on it for four or five years. The problem is bringing the trunk line in here and that's about a $15 million cost to bring the trunk fiber in here for. And we will have that for Chatham Park and the rest of Pittsboro when it gets here. So that's on the way. So when these lots are being put in, fiber will be installed at the same time in anticipation of that main trunk line coming in.
Do you have any plans with the trunk line?
They're working on it now.
Any projections in two years, five years?
We hope to have it in before the first home sold, which will be, you know, less than two years. And then it'll, then it'll serve the businesses also. We will have a minimum of 1 gigabyte and 10 gigabytes for office and business.
Thank you.
And you've always said that whatever goes to Chatham Park will also come to serve the Chatham, Pittsboro.
It can, yes, ma'am. It just depends on how many customers they give for the cost of the line to extend the line. But that's only how, that's how Google does it. They go in a neighborhood and if several people sign up, they can afford to run the line. They just can't run the line for one person. They will be, it'll be available here for that.
2.2, the open space area plan west. What is the nature of the pattern that looks like stones in the--
That would be a, representing a slope stabilization. So in that area, that was, that was part of the previous plans on Bond Parkway. That would be a slope or retaining wall that we would be, that would be installed with that. So that's, that's representing a cut slope. wall, that we would be, that would be installed with that, so that's representing a cut slope.
On the prior page, the tree coverage area plan west, it's cross-marked with a hatch, crosshatch pattern that indicates tree restoration area.
That is, the tree restoration is within that, that is the, basically like a 3D one slope that leads up to the tree restoration area. They're not overlapping. Two different, that's the slope that goes from the tree restoration down to the grade of the road.
Well, I see the tree preservation area inside, and I see the trees indicated, but tree restoration area is crosshatch, and that crosshatch appears to be the exact same thing on the next page, it's represented by stone.
And that is not tree restoration, I mean, that area is not even in a tree restoration. That's what you're asking. It's a slope area that goes up to it, so I mean.
So it's an error on the key?
No, it's not, it's not a, I don't think it's an error, no. Let me look.
I'm sorry, now that I look more closely, I do see that it's not crosshatch, it's stone on both pages.
That's a small scale, I don't know.
Yeah, all right, I apologize. But on that subject, I really appreciate the tree survey and the presence of that data on these maps, and it seems pretty clear that a greater number of trees could be preserved, and there's pretty good specimens, 20, 24-inch diameter, and some twins that are in the 30s. And I'd very much like to see an effort made to shift that median, preserve those specimens.
You're looking at which sheet? I'm sorry.
First page, or I guess 1.0, the existing. I guess that's not the actual tree survey, I don't know if you have a page that's on tree survey, do you?
The tree, that's incorporated into the tree state, tree coverage plan. So, and we, you know, we went, we started to ask, that was approved with the previous plan on the alignment and the median, so that plans are already approved. But just to give a little history, we had gone out there, we walked that probably a year and a half ago, we've gone out there, located this, we went back and forth with that median, median design for that road and the road alignment itself, multiple times. We divided that probably, you know, at least two or three times, and increased the median width there just to preserve the trees where we could. So we've gone through the effort to do that, but the median itself and those plans, that was approved, I think that was September.
And that should sell?
Yes, but we have looked at that, I assure you that there's been great effort in looking at multiple options and trying to preserve what we could, and maybe we'll back on this site point, too.
I appreciate that. Yeah, and it's nice to see that 48-inch oak remaining. This may be more of a question for you, Mr. Smith. Tell me a little bit about the marketing and the concept of having the parking so far away from those residences. I love the cottage concept, but I showed a couple of people this, and they're thinking, well, I don't know that I'd want to live that far and have to have all my groceries. So can you tell me a little bit about thinking and marketing, and how that will be received?
This product is called Pocket Neighborhood, it's very successful out in the Seattle/Washington area, our group's called The Cottage Company, and they've been very successful at it, and this is modeled right after their model. The homes are small, close together, heavily landscaped, and we try to eliminate as much parking near them, so that you've got as much grass around them. So you sacrifice having a garage, or, none of them have garages except some of these on the front top roof, so you sacrifice that in order to get a small house with a green area around it. And they seem to be selling great in those areas, because there are several of these projects that are more upcoming to this area. This will be one of probably 10 or 15 throughout northern, our North Village like this, that's going to be different, different styles, but they're small. Smallest home's 800 square feet here, so that's twice the size of a hotel room, so they're relatively small. So we're trying to eliminate as much pavement near the unit to provide, to provide a little grass around it, so.
Okay, I appreciate you engaging, make sure you answer.
So no parking other than the one up at the top?
Yes, we'll have garages, you see those driveways? These have no garages, and they are parked either in these parking areas or on the street. They go parking on the street, but there's some parked on the other streets.
On these garages, too, it looks like you guys are allowing more than two cars per cottage?
It's the, it's two cars per unit is the requirement for parking.
And that doesn't include these up?
Yeah, that includes, that includes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Are those two-car garages or one car?
We're just counting one driveway, one.
Yeah, or one, one stacks in front of the garage.
In one part, clarification on the USIs, we've got 1,000 to 2,000 shown on the plan, but that is the building envelope, the box that you see. The actual square footage for the building when it comes in is going to range probably 850 to 1,250 square feet. So just to let you know that, that, you know, because we're showing a building envelope and worst case, but you're going to have Porsches and Nucks and things like that, so there's an actual building footprint.
What's the station length of that?
Just in addition, the project that he's saying was approved previously of around your, either 70-foot lots, these would be like custom rear lots all the way around, so this would be like a pocket inside of a neighborhood, which makes it very nice. And of course, right here, please.
And Mr. Smith, you've pledged at various times different things regarding electric vehicle charging for residential units. Where does that stand now with regard to the, both inside the pocket neighborhood and cottages, and the prior, previously approved neighborhood surroundings?
Every house built in Chatham Park that has a garage will have a 220 plug in the garage if we have to plug an electric vehicle in. We will have vehicle charging stations on these parking lots, these terminal parking lots, like we do in our, on our office section up there. But we pledge that every house that has a garage will have the capability to plug a 220 plug in.
So all the houses that have garages will have 220?
In the garage.
In the garage. Not an actual charging station, but the wire needed to.
Hook it up, because there's 10 different kinds.
That's right, yeah. Let the building owner pick out whatever their favorite part there is.
Or you can plug directly into the 220.
Correct.
Or 10, but 220's what's needed.
And then, I'm recalling the additional element, up to 10% of the parking areas, or that, that wouldn't apply to residential?
No, just businesses.
Okay, and so what amount of EV charging to anticipate in a parking lot for?
Haven't figured that out yet. We will see what the trend is, you know, figure it out.
Just noticing, there's no accommodations for bicycles, it says on the master plan cover page. Does that mean that you're not covering bicycle lanes, or what's the disability for walking your bike?
Yeah, I think that's just a carryover from the requirement that's for the commercial office buildings, so you will, we're not designing, there's not a requirement for the residential on the bike parking element, so that was a carryover from the site data table like with the last office building that we did, where you got to do two, I forget what it is, but two percent eighty thousand square feet. So, but, and they're just like single-family, they can have in the garage, they can have at the residence themselves, so.
What's the status of the affordability of these?
In fact, bike lanes will be provided as long, we've got that built into the Bond Parkway, so we can be at a bike lane, so.
Are any of these, in the technical sense, more affordable?
Depends on what definition of affordable is. What is definition of is, when Mr. Clinton said? They will be priced, market price, I can't tell you exactly what they'll be right now, but I would say the smallest one would be like 215, 2 and 1/4, or something like that. The problem is the lot price, the lot prices are going to be half of what, half of what the house price would be because of construction costs and the land costs, so it kind of varies.
Well, I like the, like the concept, I like this concept a lot, like the mix of units, that some have the garages, the majority don't. So I think it could be a really attractive development. I'll make a motion to approve.
I second that. I'd like to say I like the concept a lot. I wanted to think this is something that this board would need, because we do need an additional allocation, not just within the power, so again, I second that.
Motion by Michael Fiacca, seconded by Daniel Baldwin. Any further questions? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed. Motion carries down.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sure you know, it must take you long, as our other pocket neighborhoods are, aren't they? Because they have a name as hard as it is. We hope to be green out here in the next two weeks, but hold on till you have.
The next item of business is the sewer allocation for these cottages.
Okay, as such, if they need to have sewer, and the request is for 9,000 gallons per day at the cottages. Right now, we have approximately 83,000, 83,500 paper flow, so the request is, in keeping the staff feeling that this is something that we could, that the paper flow could take on, we would request that you approve the request for a period of 12 months, as far as site plans can be approved, or as long as the site plan approvals are kept active. So if they're building and moving dirt for them the next 12 months are, that's an active project, so just keep those active, not have to come back just because they have to build a house. Can we talk about that site plan? We talked about establishing the infrastructure, not building homes, correct? In other words, the parking lot on the sidewalks?
Yeah, you approved the.
The site elements.
Right, right.
And so those are, or associated with the validity of the site plan, not the houses.
Right, that's right, yeah.
Right. So long as they break ground and are continuous.
That's right.
Prior to expiration of the site plan.
Right.
They're in good standing.
That's right.
Make a motion to approve with that condition.
Moved by Michael Fiacca, seconded by Jay Farrell, that the sewer allocation be approved for a 12-month period, or for as long as active building or dirt moving is ongoing. Further discussions? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries down. The third item under home business is something I've been wanting to do for some time, and that is, our agenda's always been too long to be able to do it, that is to be able to give you a report on the conference, which I need to stop and thank you all for, because the town partially funded my trip to Chicago for the mayor's climate change conference. And so I wanted to bring home some of the ideas and thoughts from that conference, and so Mr. Gruzeck has got on the, on the monitor, the letter from Lou Manuel, who, the mayor of Chicago, who put the conference together in just amazingly short period of time, and got a huge number of contributors from major corporations and trusts and groups of people who were interested in climate, and, and so that is followed by the actual signing document, which we all very ceremoniously signed during, during the conference. So the charter consisted of making a series of promises that were generic, and, and basically talked to the idea that the federal government had failed so completely in, in either believing or acting on climate change issues. And then, and then there were a series of, of local promises that were given to us if we wanted to exclude some of them or whatever, that section there, the commission for, for local promises. And you all have that in your packet, I believe, and we can talk about that later, but one of the, well, the first event was an evening session at the Field Museum in Chicago. It was sponsored by the MacArthur Foundation, and it was fascinating because it was truly the, the Chicago community coming together, and the emphasis was placed on engaging the entire community for climate responsibility. Quote that I wrote down was, each and every person has a role in controlling climate change. And the climate industry is growing. There are now about 600,000 people working in clean tech industry, and that, you know, the way statistics are, they have a tendency to change with time, so I'm sure it's a great deal more now. And here in North Carolina, over 1,000 firms employ nearly 35,000 people, including our own John Woods. Government is really playing a catch-up game in a sense, with the conscience of communities who have recognized these impacts well before the government did. One of the people we heard from that night at the Field Museum was Mustafa Ali, who was the EPA's chief environmental justice director. He spoke, talked about the fact that he resigned from the EPA in the spring of 2017 after the president cut the EPA budget, and, and so his issue was one of, because we cannot rely on other sources, we need to come together in a community of inclusion. Dallas Goodto, a member of the Dakota People, thanked, thanks the people on whose land we stand today, which I thought was such an interesting idea, and he listed all of the tribes, some of whom have been removed from the Chicago area from their land, and others who still have a presence in Chicago. So what can individuals do? Well, one small change can make a difference. A community can create systems and space for climate responsibility, and that we should not be deterred by the largeness of the issue. The story that I'd like to tell is that when I was first running for, for mayor, someone came up to me at a public meeting and said, I want to hear what you're going to do about climate change, and at the time, I had not been well-educated, and I thought, what can I do about climate change in Pittsburgh? I mean, it's such a vast issue. Well, one small step at a time, and that's basically what, what this conference was addressing, was the community can create those systems, and there are a lot of resources out there, there are climate change toolkits, one of which is, is published by the Field Museum, and, and lots of toolkits provided by environmental organizations. The next day, I took a 100% electric bus, it was the most amazing thing. The next day, I took a 100% electric bus, it was the most amazing thing, to an off-site meeting at the Underwriters Laboratory, a building which is totally energy independent, not very attractive, but totally. And this, this conference was put on by Mars Corporation, the candy company. They were a sponsor, and they pledged years ago to reduce their greenhouse gases in their operations by 67%, targeting 2015, and their real estate has currently hit target of being 100% energy renewable. So that can make us feel good about indulging in a candy bar. So, if the federal and the state governments are backing away from climate issues, then comes the question, how do we create entities that do work? As we know from working with Chatham Park, when you're trying to think out 30 or 40 years and imagine what technology is going to be, we have a hard enough time trying to do that with, with you all, Chatham Park. So you can imagine what the infrastructure and transportation issues are with respect to an entire globe. But one of the big suggestions, and one of the big advances and wonderful things that we have here, is that working with the universities is really key to finding innovations for the future. For example, sensors built by a company called Argone, or Argani, have been installed on buildings with utility companies so that they can track data and make it public. And once the public understands what data is accessible, then it will become more accepted, and people are going to start watching their smartphones to see how much water they're using, or how much electricity they're using back home when they're at work. One of the themes at the conference was transportation. The panel suggested that there be collaboration between governance, climate, economy, and corporate leadership. And, they acknowledged something that we've known here in Chatham County for some time, that the most CO2 is emitted by electricity, 29%, and transportation, 27%. Well, that's the first step that is recommended, that we do a global inventory, and Chatham County has indeed done that. And that inventory showed that 78% of the county's carbon footprint came from transportation. That's not at all an unusual finding, considering that 65% of us leave the county every day and, and go to work. Experts suggest that we'll go to, up to post-half of electric vehicles by near 2015. And trucks are interesting, because they're now being monitored to reduce emissions, shifting patterns, and more increased efficiency. Buses and trains are doing a similar thing, by cutting off air conditioning, reducing idle time, and caterpillar industry is a good example. They've implemented strategies to reduce emissions and save fuel, and even with various corporate initiatives being done, trucks lag terribly behind private cars, and will probably not reach green gold until 30 or 40 years in the future. One of the most fascinating parts was learning about other people's jurisdiction. Kirk Caldwell, who is the mayor of Honolulu, talked about how they are implementing energy savings in their affordable housing, to make it even more affordable. But because of limited space, they have, I believe, 600 square miles on the island of Hawaii. They, they're concentrating more on waste reduction, and have committed that they will build no more landfills. They're also committing to being all-electric by 2045. The mayor of a suburb of Portland, Oregon, pointed out that the steel and concrete industries were the two most carbon-intensive industrial polluters. So, there are a variety of things that people talked about during the panels and during the work sessions, working on smart chargers to let people know when their car is fully charged, that will let another person charge their car at the EV station more efficiently. And, I did not realize this, but apparently autonomous cars are not a solution, they're a problem. They're not a solution, because you're adding more vehicles to the roadways, and the lanes, and all of the additions to the infrastructure system to accommodate them would actually increase traffic rather than reduce it. There are several jurisdictions that are trending towards 20-minute neighborhoods, which are zoned and built in areas so that the commute is only 20 minutes from your work or your shopping to your home. Those of you who know me know that I have gotten more than a little bit excited about waste, and so the waste theme was just absolutely amazing. We heard from the Delta Institute and from Waste Management, remember, we use waste industries, not waste management. But Delta Institute is a nonprofit dealing with byproducts, everything from compost to construction materials. Waste Management says, and you've probably heard this statistic before, that 40% of what goes in landfills is food in organic waste. 40% of all household food is wasted, and restaurants come in just a little bit less than that. So the Waste Management folks talked a lot about what the garbage truck or recycling truck of the future might look like, and predicted that it would look like the cockpit of a, of a airplane, so that the user of the cab could calculate energy and route to traffic and all of that. And why is that so important? Because each gallon of diesel fuel produces 22 pounds of CO2, and so it results in, over the lifetime of a truck, results in 880 tons of CO2 entering our atmosphere. Of course, Waste Management and Waste Industries will probably tell you that waste is a multiple-billion-dollar industry, and they've certainly made great profits over it. I think we pay close to $360,000 a year for the waste and recycling to be picked up here in our small community. But they pointed out that waste is really a manufacturing industry, and that we need to concentrate on reducing landfills, 240 landfills in the United States, and what they're talking about is locating not just the ordinary old landfill, but what could be an innovative landfill to replace the, the standard landfill. Glass is the most frequently recycled material, and yet it has the least value from an environmental standpoint. So, it's important to look at, at how we charge right now for the collection of our, of our recycling and our garbage and compost. Glass is being converted into roadway materials in some areas. In Honolulu, the mayor said that they are grinding the glass into sand and refurbishing the beaches with, with, with glass. Fascinating. You know, in general, cities just need to think about innovative materials that drive the market for recycled products, and to treat waste as a commodity. So, they came to boiling down two questions, the questions that we need to ask whenever we go to shop for something. We need to hold corporations responsible for, how much of your product is created from recycled material versus virgin material? So that's the corporate part of the responsibility. But our responsibility is, how much are we, the people, recycling after we get ahold of that product? This should show that companies, that both companies and people need to be considered, but the corporations will start with that responsibility, and then people will follow suit. Some take-home ideas were, meet your recycler, which we planned to do today, but we did not get there, but we're going to, to work on that in the future, to find out what materials they're using and what materials they want. I got very excited over the idea of composting residential food waste, and a lot of people think that composting food waste is not worth the trouble. John Bonnet and I talked about this, but at this conference, they talked about something called the blue bags, which essentially you put your wet, yucky compost material into blue bags, and then put them into your regular trash. The regular waste stream, of course, crushes a lot of, of the waste that you generate, but these blue bags survive the truck compaction and can be pulled out on the floor of the transfer station. John tells me we don't use a floor transfer station, but still, this is a fascinating idea. It means that you can collect the wet materials for compost by, without running any new routes, without having any other trucks out there, and have a centralized location for the pickup of food waste to make into compost. So, in summary, the Paris Accords were for countries, and technically and legally, cities have no obligation to follow through, but we have an important role. And, so it was such an amazing process, I'd like to go on, but I've taken way too much time. It is very important just to remember that small steps do matter, and even if, even if you're just making a small change in your household, it can be a big change to the environment. And, as I read somewhere, and I think it was on an email from John Bonnet, none of this matters unless it translates into an action plan. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I can't spell what I've done.
Stormwater?
Yes. Our next item is stormwater. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, so this community did something about recycling. I think in 2010, maybe, I think it was 2010, when we put out the bid, a refuse collection. And one of our stipulations was, we wanted larger recycling containers, because we had the little 16-gallon ones, now we have, what, 96-gallon bowl-out carts, and I understand that our recycling is a recycle industry. So, that was one of the little things we mentioned.
And I think there are a lot of people that, on recycling day, have more in their recycling bin than they have in their regular trash, and that's always just a thrill to see. Thank you, Jeff Jones.
No problem. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, tonight we're going to continue our discussion on the latest draft of the stormwater element in the manual. At the last meeting, there was good discussion, and we had members of Chatham Park here to answer some questions, but we did not have the author of the element. And Hunter is with us tonight, and he is going to give you a short presentation on the latest draft, and be able to entertain any questions that you all may have with him. I know some questions have been forwarded from Commissioner Fiocco to Chatham Park and the staff and the other board members, but this might be a good opportunity for others to chime in with some comments. I will bring you up to speed. Last meeting, we were asked to engage with Hyder Structures to do a peer review of the element and the manual. We met with Hyder Structures last week, and we'll meet with them again next week to go over some initial comments and questions. The meeting was with myself and Hunter, and Becky and Brandon from Hyder Structures, so I think it was a good meeting. It lasted almost three hours. We, we did a lot of work during that time to go over the element, they bring them up to speed as much as we could, as much as Hunter could, and we look forward to their review in the next couple of weeks. Okay? I'll turn it over to Hunter, and if you have any questions, we'll be here afterwards.
Thank you. It's good to be back. I did have a very short presentation, hopefully none of this is, is news, but I wanted to just restate some of the changes that were in the most recent provisions that we've submitted, and this was submitted prior to the previous council meeting. And four, four that I just wanted to highlight is that we now have a tiered target score based on the percentage of the total watershed and its proximity to the Hall River. That change came directly from the public meeting in the summer. We've added some strength to language that the scoring calculation for the watershed scores will be included to site plans and middles, and further refined at construction drawings. Per some earlier comments from Commissioner Bonnet, we've added compost and references to compost into at least two sections of the evaluation. And, lastly, that the, we took some, some additional verbiage to explain the location of the, location where compliance with various stormwater standards would be met geographically on sites or watersheds or in relation to buffers. Just to expand on the tiered scoring very quickly, it is still one target score per watershed, it's just that each watershed may have a different target score based on the amount of the watershed and how close that watershed is to the Hall River. So it's a weighted average based on land area. Next slide. Just two quick examples here, the shading doesn't show up very well, but you can see Areas 1 and 2, which are, which are both delineated subwatersheds. Area 1 is comprised entirely of land that's within 2,000 feet of the Hall River. So the first shading, the reddish color, at least from my angle, looks reddish, is the area between 0 and 1,000 feet of the Hall River, and the blue shading, the darker blue shading is, is 1,000 to 2,000 feet of the Hall River, and then the remainder of Chatham Park, which is in excess of 2,000 feet of the Hall River. So we have three target scores, 120 points, which was our previous total. The middle zone, 1,000 to 2,000 feet from the Hall River, has a target score of 125 points, and the area closest to the Hall River has a target score of 130 points. And so the composite target score for any sub watershed is based on the weighted average of land within each of those zones, and that's shown a little bit in, in the example calculation of how that's calculated. So, for instance, Watershed 1 would have a target score of 128.1 points, because 62% of that is within 1,000 feet of the Hall River, and the remaining 38% is within 2,000 feet of the Hall River. Example 2 has a small portion that is outside of 2,000 feet, so it has all three zones in it, and results in a target score of 124.6 points. So, this calculation would be done for every watershed based on its proximity to the Hall River, and I just wanted to show this visually to hopefully explain what's written in the fairly technical section of the design manual. One last slide, just to respond to a conversation that the mayor and I had at the Jordan Lake One Water Meeting, and I fully understand, and that is, and also some, some comments I heard after the last board meeting. It's a, it's a complex system, and it absolutely is. I'm not shying away from that fact. I do feel personally that there's a need to have it be a complex system. Evaluating a watershed is not a simple task. If we oversimplify it, we will not hit the intended goal of, of having a comprehensive protection program, that's my, that's my belief. So I think the complexity is warranted, we are taking as many steps as we can to simplify it, but that burden largely lays within Chatham Park, and our responsibility to make the application process as smooth and simplified as possible for our applicants. So those calculations and all of that paperwork will come to the DRC before they come to the town, and it's incumbent on the applicant to, you know, fill out, fill out those forms and calculations completely. It's on us to have a clear and concise application process, so that when the information does come to the town, that you, is easily understood by staff and, and all the boards who may need to approve it. So, just wanted to restate that goal, and hopefully ease some concerns there of the extra burden that's being created here. With that, happy to, to answer any questions, discuss the email that Mr. Fiocco sent, or any previous comments that you have, or anything that may not have been covered two weeks ago.
Questions from the board?
It is complex. I have one question, man. I may, I may be on the wrong scenario, Hunter, but on the watershed, just explain the difference on the watershed protection and development, area practices there. And on the watershed protection, what the difference is?
Which, the, the, the goal of watershed protection can be conflicting with the goal of development and encouraging economic development, and to find the balance between those two creates a lot of the complexity.
So watershed protection will still be on that point, sir?
Absolutely, oh yeah, we're not. Oh, yeah, we're not. I'm stating is that if all we were thinking about was development, it would be a simple question. If all we were thinking about was watershed protection, there may be simple answers. It's trying to find the balance between both of those within Chatham Park that makes it a complex discussion.
I'm sorry, I missed the first target score for the furthest away.
Furthest away is still 120 points, which is what we've always been committed to.
And then we move to within 1,000 feet of the Hall?
130, 130 points within 1,000 feet, and 125 for 1,000 and 2,000. We look forward to the comments from Hydrostructures. If there's something else tonight, let us know. Let my email stand. If you want to reply to it tonight, if you want to put it in an email back to us, ask Find My Meet.
Perfect. Send an email back.
Yeah, we'll send you an email back. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Thank you.
I almost enjoyed it.
Only an engineer would say that.
So, we will await Hydrostructures' comments and hopefully bring this up for a vote in two weeks. Could we put this back on the agenda?
Is there some possibility of getting Hydrostructures back?
I don't know. We're going to meet with Hydrostructures on, I think it's Wednesday or Thursday, but so.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Next week. And we'll see where we stand there. Obviously, that's running up against when packets begin to go out, so I'm unsure if it's two weeks. I said my memo was in the next month with what I think is state.
And I really want to chew on Hydrostructures' comments. Gently digest them.
Can Hunter, or you can pull up the screen with me if you want to go right into the talk. Copy Jeff on this slide.
Well, with that said, Ms. Mayor, I have copies of the redlined two elements, park and transit, from December, and I'd like to pass those two out, so everybody's got a copy, and maybe we could address those at the next meeting, because they're fairly simple. They're not complicated. They're very simple. So, I'm trying to get these approvals passed along. So, I'm going to pass these out, and I've got some for staff. These are from December, no changes. Maybe we could put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
And we were actually thinking about doing that.
Yes.
For this, but we also wanted to be able to get into the, hearing from, from the community. All right. Thank you. That brings us to additional updates and reports. Ron Grisbet has updates for us, and.
Hopefully, can you come up with tonight? There's a good meeting coming up. Mayor President Baldwin mentioned the board, the House Committee meeting is this Thursday, March 1st, six, and that's at the New Chad, Metropolitan Conference Center, and those are available to the public. Tomorrow, just as a reminder for you guys all here tonight, there is a joint Tri-All Cog meeting that is, we sent out, sent out a couple of reminders about those in the past, I won't do whatever. That's in Sider City at 6:30, and I believe their courtroom is right there at City Hall, or at Town Hall there. So, that's tomorrow at 6:30. On March 6th, we have the Parks and Rock Master Plan Work Session here at Town Hall. And then, the mayor and I will be attending legislative breakfast of mayors and managers in Chatham County, as well as the legislators in the conference center on March 16th, maybe fairly, where we'll be sharing some legislative issues. So, if you could, if you want to follow those through either Mayor Perry or I'd be happy to take that as well. I think those are the big, those are the big meetings coming up, and I might have, I have mentioned of another meeting or two here as we, as we get into this briefly. Jordan Lake Partnership, as you recall previous meetings, we're looking at, we sent the RFQ out for a water treatment system master plan. At this point in time, it's appropriate, I think, that we, we start engaging and continue to engage, actually continue to engage with Jordan Lake Partnership and determine how the town will continue to fit into a work plan with JLP, particularly with regards to cost sharing and the Western intake project, and I have a, I have a conference, or I have a meeting with those folks here, I believe this is upcoming on Friday. Water and Sewer Master Plan, we are selecting, in the process of selecting a consultant. And you'll recall that that's the project that works with Chatham County, Golds and Sider City to develop basically an overview and possible solutions and funding sources for water, a shared or connected overview of our water and sewer system in Chatham County and in the local government. So, we are in the final process of selecting a consultant with that. I believe we have an interview with the consultant next week on that, so we'll have more to report on that. As mentioned previously, our board, we all engaged in the winter retreat. I would like to be sharing those results with you in the next few days, as soon as I receive them from the consultant. There is quite a bit on there that we are doing and will be doing, certainly enough to keep us busy, so we will be checking in on that with regularity, since I get it. And then, also too, another item to, I guess, keep in mind is the county's work to this point in time on the special assessment districts have been legislatively, created the legislative approval for the state that, but as you recall, I think we had a couple of meetings previous to maybe one or two board members being online. There was a report from the county on what the special assessment district would entail, advantages, disadvantages. The county undertook financial analysis, in fact, with Davenport. Just this past week, along with Mayor Perry and Commissioner Fiocco, were invited to attend a meeting with a couple of county board members and county manager, and did an update on what, on what the special assessment district currently looks like, such as it is, and the progress toward it, as well as surrounding issues. I think at that meeting, and Commissioner Fiocco, Mayor Perry, again, I think at that meeting, we've agreed that we may want to have a completely thorough overview within the board, that is you, all of you, all the states of you, sometime within the next few weeks, and that invite also the county manager to that, to kind of find out where we're at in that, if possible and necessary, a larger meeting with the county board, or incorporate that into one of our joint meetings. What I'd like to do is maybe take, if we could, take a minute and indulge me if we could come up with a meeting date for that. One option that I thought of would be on March 12, we have a regular board meeting, and we wanted to attend a little bit earlier. That was one of the dates, as I recall, that Rene Pascal would be available, county manager. We could also do sometime during that weekend, evening or late afternoon, or sometime during the week of, oh yes, sometime during the week of the 12th, or sometime during the week of the 5th, which I guess would be sooner than, obviously, the next board meeting. So, anytime during the week of the 5th, or the board meeting on the 12th, a little bit earlier, or sometime during that week, but not March 15th, is that a case? Does that clear as much?
He's reputable for this entire brain. Yeah, 15th works great.
The 15th is not available.
I know. Still works great.
So, so what option would be to have a board meeting, to have, to have this in kind of a workshop shop session before the board's regular meeting on March 12? So, come in at 6 o'clock, do that. I don't know if we need to spend more than an hour on it at that stage, anyway. We certainly could, but, you know, at that stage, I don't know if we need to. Or sometime that week, but not the 15th, or sometime during the week of the 5th. Is that a better way of saying it?
14th, I think, works for me. Let's do an hour before the board meeting.
Yeah, I like the bell. And I think that Commissioner Foley, before she fell sick, she indicated that this work session is something she can work in. Okay, let's do that. If that doesn't work today for some reason, then we can help much back at you guys. Thank you very much for doing that. Then, we also managed to meet with John Potite. I met with Provost at Community College to locate the second kiosk near the library entrance. If you go out there, you can see where, I believe John should have it up sometime in the next, I was hoping the next few days. If it's not up, you can see near the benches and near the planter, near the front of the library entrance, you can see there's a pink dot, and that's where we kind of identified where it should go, but Provost wanted to see that, so he can represent that to his board, so hopefully we'll have another kiosk there. The markets are downtown, the folks who visit the Community College. I haven't had any, Commissioner Fiocco, if you have any guidance on the location of the third kiosk, I mean, we need to, you know, get a little deeper into that, because we haven't talked.
Right.
I generally know where you're talking about, we really haven't got much.
Yeah, I think we need to meet with the county to talk about that issue.
Our engineer, our engineer, our posting should be up tomorrow after I have Alice eyeball it and, and send it out to the other usual spots. The application will be due on March 29. So, that's something that we're going to take as long as we need to, though, to get the right candidate. The, I have some other, some other meetings going on with regards to Town Hall, particularly tomorrow with HAVS, building program, and then there's also that's some work that they've done on the TOPO survey and the location of utilities around the Town Hall site. So, that, that's to get forward a little bit, and then we could have installation of the first electric vehicle charging station as early as next week, I'm told, out at Mary Holmes Barber Park. We'll work on the other locations. It's, as soon as we can work out some cost issues, we have to play house doctrine for that, we'll get carve out room in our budget to do that. With that, oh, yeah, I guess the picture, I guess the picture of the asphalt top, well, the top picture up there, the cobble alligator asphalt up there at the top of the picture is actually Town Hall, and that appeared shortly after some of the cool staff that we have. And really kind of the alligator was there, but it really brought up those cracks a lot more. The after picture is kind of below, which I don't know, again, at the day, is much of an improvement, other than we don't have chunks of asphalt to throw at each other anymore. So, we did have, I guess the overall message there is we did have in town some patchwork going on in different spots, so we did some holes. I'm sure there's some others that we can attend to, as well as some larger paving that we'll be doing before, I believe, before the end of this budget year yet. With that, I will tap out and open it up for any.
Any questions for Ron Grisbet?
Do we have a sense of the agenda for the TJ Card meeting?
I think I have something that maybe was forwarded to us, and it was forwarded to you.
Okay. I apologize if I missed it.
Yeah, and you might have, because I'm not recalling, I don't mean, yes, you might have, I mean, I'm not recalling it off the top of my head, but it seems like we got something.
Okay. I'll dig for that.
If I, I'll look for it too, and if I, if I find it, then I'll shoot it right out yet tonight.
I would be very curious to read more about the Chatham County Water Sewer Master Plan, specifically if you would be able to share in specifications, prior to requests for whatever it was, requests for votes, or requests for votes.
Would the rest of the board like to see that as well?
And that was a county RFQ?
Yep.
Yes, you helped. And related to that, I think, real topic was, there was discussion at our last meeting about the county and town finishing an interconnection study?
Yeah. We have, we have, we have some work that's done out, or we actually do have results of the interconnection study itself. There's not a lot of meat to it, but yeah, we can go into that a little bit more. And one of the final, I didn't say one of the final, one of the memos that, that I had seen on it wasn't really completed at the time that it was put together, so I kind of want to button that up before we close out.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see it. For a copy.
Yeah, there's, you know, I guess the executive, the really, really, really dumbed down executive summary for that is that there are, there are connections there, some of the connections might work, but would require improvements, others maybe might not work, so we would, we would have a significant amount of investment to really make those connections gain.
Well, if we're looking for a redundant water supply, maybe the less cost effective way to do it.
Yeah, I think that's what we want to get into a little bit, was the master planning to, this remark that I hear.
Sounds good. And I definitely appreciate the update on the Jordan Lake Partnership, because I think that's going to be a really important part of whatever master planning we as a town embark upon. So, thank you, thank you for that continued effort. I'm also curious about the engineering position that you advertised, and did you decide to combine salaries for that?
Combine which salaries for that?
Available funds in order to track.
Yeah, the posting as of right now is going to be depending on qualifications, salaries depending on qualifications, so the goal is to get the best qualified candidate. And with that, in the advertisement with that, that we're specific that the stormwater, that the position also act as stormwater, the town's stormwater is all, I guess. So, stormwater is a part of it, but it also mentions utilities is also being investigated. So, as I've said a couple of times to the board, the ideal would be to have an engineer that has all of those capacities. We'll see what kind of, see what kind of resonates we can get. It's, there's a good, good possibility it's going to be our highest paid position, maybe the third highest paid employee in the town of this town.
Thanks for the information, Ron.
Okay. Anything else? Are we ready for Commissioner's concerns? Jay Farrell?
Oh, hey, thanks.
Ron, thanks for the update on the kiosk. It was one of my curiosities about progress. And the other one I have is the streetlights along Lowe's Drive up to the apartments, there are none, and I think. There are none, and I think we talked about this several, several months ago. And I was just curious to know how we built a public grid without no streetlights. Although, you know, it's, it's dark when you go through the shopping area and there, you know, there's lights everywhere and then it's just black. I mean, it's very dark going up the hill. So, we've got sidewalks. People are gonna walk on sidewalks. I think we could, I don't know where, so, yeah. I, I'm curious to know, I, I mean, I think it should be lit. I would like hours of beat. Go ahead, move the pole in.
No, I don't have anything other than Commissioner Vaughn's question, we know about the agenda for the joint meeting that happened on February thirteenth.
Very good. All right, thank you. I'll look that up.
If you can't find it, let me know. Looking at it somewhere.
Town what?
Yes, I do. I do have concern, overarching concern is this Hillsborough Street project. There should be enough here for all of us and Mr. Jones, Mr. Bruce Beck, and another staff person or attorney, if they're curious. So, NC DOT is proceeding apace with this project. It is in transportation, improve plan as R five seven two four. This is the widening of fifteen five oh one Hillsborough Street from Lounas north to Powell Place, excuse me, Powell Place Lane. And this is just a schematic, just a very rough idea. And this is based on many years of, apparently many people on this board and prior boards advocating for both sidewalks and bike lanes in this project. Thanks to Mr. Jones, you pointed out to me that the planning process that is afoot right now and will continue through spring and I believe into summer, we're, we're footing part of the bill for that. And that's because we have asked for the bike lane and the, and the sidewalk on both sides. The district engineer has informed me that sometime in April, it did yet to be decided, they're going to have a public meeting. And what I would like to ask of this board is if we want to do something different. Because as it's proposed right now, I think I've said before, if we build a bike lane on that, on either side, I, I'm not gonna ride it. I don't know anybody who would ride it. Maybe some hot shot, you know, macho super bikers would be brave enough to ride right next to vehicular traffic. But I think it's, I think most of us agree that that section of the street is a, is a gateway to our town. And we, I think we have an opportunity here to think big and think towards a vision that will enhance that section of road, make it more like a street and less like a highway, perhaps, more like a neighborhood. And help set the tone instead of people having, having people just barrel down that stretch of road until they get right up to the mill before they tap the brakes. I guess I just really wanted to stimulate a conversation on this board, as well as in the public. But I also have a document that I've literally just thrown together. It didn't take me much time at all. I'm absolutely not a planner. It's not meant to be representative or anything other than a very rough scheme, schematic, conceptual, three different visions. And bearing in mind there are very few houses that are that close, this was an artifact of the tool that I used. It was a free tool on the internet that anybody can use. But it is a residential section. I think we need to remember that. And I guess I just wanted to also ask the board if we built it. The way it's drawn on this black and white drawing, who does? Who, who on this board does envision walking on the sidewalks to go to Lowe's or riding a bicycle on a lane?
I think people, I think people would walk, but if I was the hope, I wouldn't ride my bike. And I do like to ride my bike, but I would not on fifteen five oh one. But I think walking, yes.
John, I don't recall the description of macho super biker or whatever. I'm clearly not that.
It's you.
I am not that, but I, I will definitely ride my bike there.
You will?
I ride my bike from my home to my book store. Okay? And where there are bikes.
Power to you. I'm impressed. More power to you.
But there's a, there's an enormous biking, bicycling community. And we really desire bike lanes, because there is the separation, because you were gonna ride your bike on the road. And the vast majority of the riding we do is on roads that don't have bike lanes. And so we are sharing the road, so to speak. And, you know, you, you travel on roads oftentimes that are fifty-five miles per hour. And you're riding down that road with the grace of others who share the road with you. Most of you come home at night. And so for me, I will, I mean, I ride that stretch right now. Right now is exceptional. So the idea of a bike lane there is very attractive. I definitely would use the sidewalks as well. And you know, it's not that the sidewalk goes all the way to Lowe's and I just go to my neighbor's house. I go half mile down. But so, yeah, I'm a, I'm a firm, firm advocate of putting bike lanes out here. Speed limit's thirty-five, forty-five. I know you've been coming up lowering that thirty-five every entire way. Makes sense to me. Yeah, it really does. But I think, yeah, the bike lanes will do a lot to help put the road on a diet, so to speak, so that it doesn't feel as though you can go forty-five miles per hour, fifty-five miles per hour. And, you know, I think part of these exhibits, there is something, the mayor is piling about the phrase road diet, but it is a phrase, putting more congestion in the road so that it doesn't feel like it's wide open and you have the ability to go at speeds with a, with a bandit, if you will, that you have to worry about the things in your peripheral vision and it doesn't feel safe to go that fast.
It'll slow you down.
It will slow you down. They call it a road, the road, road diet, so.
Not only, not only concerned, bike lane would be good, but still I don't ride my bike lane. But I'm not concerned is that there are homes which are actually very close to the street. So I want to see what their proposal would be right after. But I, it was on a bike, but not there.
Well, how about, how about these visions, Mr.?
I like the vision. I like the vision.
Do you, could you possibly imagine yourself riding any of those lanes?
I can walk.
Where there's a physical separation?
If it was a physical separation, now that's, that's different. A physical separation would be good.
You see the tree?
Yeah, the tree and a little plant. That would be really good. It would be enough room to do that. Yeah, but yeah, you can definitely ride with a tree there or the plant.
So this kind of reflects back to something we discussed in our retreat. And I think it was several of us who, we shared the concern and interest for greater connectivity between the old part of town and between that development, Chatham Park and others are proposing will have greenways. But the greenways could exist out there and we won't have any way to get to them and enjoy them from the old part of town unless we start thinking seriously in this way. And it's also been pointed out to me that there is a roughly parallel power line right away in this area to the east, cutting up from Chatham Mill, and I'm not sure exactly where it goes. But I guess I just want to note that those are, those are things that can go in the hopper. But I, I hope that we'll think about this as a way to, an opportunity potentially to create that connection between Powell Place and beautiful Park Bear and Lowe's Harbor. And then eventually perhaps we'll find a way to get across the Highway sixty-four overpass with a bike, bike lane or something like that.
And also in that, on that fifteen five oh one area, there are some streams.
Yes.
Over.
Very significant.
Yes, significant stream. So we have to take all of that into consideration.
And that's not in the right way. And I'm told, so some places it is, but other places, most of it is stuff that we would have to take care of out of town coffers or private efforts. And I understand there's some overists that are way undersized.
They are.
And they're regularly flooding.
They are. There are a lot of streams, stream run all the way from Powell Place all the way down to over, over Park Lane. And it's very low, which I've been having. But sometimes it's just some things that are connected.
Yes, yes. And in my very first conversation with the district engineer, you said, well, this is not, this is not a simple A plus B equals C. When you take two five foot bike lanes on the other sides of the road and then put them together on one side of the road, it does not equal ten feet. You need more right away. And yet I've also heard from engineers and planners who have done this, and they say, no, that is not true. That we have an educational market curve here. We've got, we can work with DOT on this, but we do need to have conversations and it seems multiple conversations. But at this point, I'd like to get consensus or a sense of, of mood with board, whether or not we would be interested or willing to communicate to NC DOT a desire for one or two or several different planning scenarios to be priced out so that we know potentially what it would cost us to do something different than this block of my drawing. We're gonna get prices on this. I don't think this is inviting and welcoming as I would like it to be. So I would like us to do more than this. And so the question is, are we interested in asking DOT to increase our, our planning, our contribution to the planning bill? We're gonna, Mr. Jones?
Figure I sent to you today, that is our portion of the construction.
Oh, a portion of construction, not planning?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. So maybe we won't incur additional costs of planning if DOT doesn't plan.
If, if, they have, they overcharge to you, but if you give them another scenario to plan out and they will do that, then maybe they'll do that.
I'm pretty certain we can go that far.
Yeah, okay.
Just the only thing, last thing he said is we need to hear sooner than later.
Right, nice. Yes, no, the figure I sent you there was our cost for sidewalks, that's twenty percent.
For concrete and pavement.
Right.
Oh, that's a big difference.
Hundred percent on bike lanes.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that makes a big difference. So then really it's just a question of, of will rather than funds from our budget, if we are interested in seeing something different. Are we interested in seeing something different, friends?
How would it not be, how would it not incur extra budget if you build medians and things like that? I just wonder if I could.
The question is, the question at, at this point is the budget for construction. The question is planning. We won't know what to do if we don't know what the various prices are. And if indeed there's no price difference for a cycle track. So a cycle track would be where the two five foot bike lanes are put on the same side of the street and some cheap plastic bollards are put up to be a very modest physical divider between vehicular traffic and whomever chooses to go on the bike, bike path. A more separated physical barrier like in Vision A or in Vision C, actually all three of these visions, those are, I think called tight paths. I think that's great. DOT has very specific breaks for that. They don't call it a cycle track. Cycle track is on the same level as the cars with just a paint or plastic bollard area.
I definitely would want to see something that is innovative and beautiful. I, I like Ken Ramalvo concerned about the possibility of some of that, that distinct. And I don't know what kind of relocation possibilities there are, because we've got sewer lines. I don't know, what else would we have, maybe to add?
Yep, they're gonna relocate a lot of utilities this year, right next.
Does that come to us, Jeff Jones, or does that DOT share in the relocation sewer line?
I think it's theirs. If you're under five thousand. Whatnot.
I, I recall that most of the conversation about gas, the gas companies might have to relocate those. I have to get back to my hose and save out water. If they, those make the.
What's the five thousand is what?
Population.
Oh.
But you still pay twenty percent of whatever it costs. Because we'll pay twenty percent on sidewalks. We, we had the same call, we were correct. Right now, the scenario of the planning of the black and white line is three hundred and thirty thousand. This is a number that we share with you all, practice in A, last year. That's what the two bike lanes, that's a hundred percent cost for us and a twenty percent cost for the sidewalks. And this will be twenty, twenty, but a different contract.
Well, I do like sidewalks on both sides. It is such a busy road to be, for folks to build heads up, cross the, hit the sidewalk. I know typically try to avoid having bike lanes and pedestrians. Yeah. There's more collisions than there are pedestrians are harmed than by other vehicles. I think, you know, the scenario does exclude sidewalk on one side.
Yeah, all three of these. It was also pointed out to me that the width of a twelve meter, and I'm sorry, this isn't a metrics, but the travel lane here is, is, I believe that's twelve feet. And the center lane, I think, is sixteen feet. There's a very interesting conversation going on among planners about how dangerous wide streets are because they encourage us to drive faster. And the, the thought was shared with me that if we were to have a bike lane right next to a twelve foot vehicle travel lane on the same level, just as, as they propose here, that that's actually the same perceived width as an interstate highway lane. And if you don't want to go fast on an interstate highway lane, I mean, that, that's, that's what it's for, is to make you feel like you could really travel safely at very high speeds. So there will be a psychological enticement to travel faster if the bike lanes are at the same level as the. the same level as the vehicle travel lane.
Well, I can go, make it 11-foot lanes and make the bike lanes 16.
And interestingly enough, the.
I mean, how many paths?
No.
It's not mining road at all. That's just changing the dimensions of the cross section.
Yeah. Commissioner Fiocco, the, the, what is the name of this, this policy that DOT is talking about that Chatham Park has embraced, the complete streets? So the Complete Streets Manual actually has prescriptions for optimal roadway widths. And they ta, they, they start at 10 feet in width rather than 12. And so this, this concern that we might be needing additional right of way encroachment into adjacent property on these lands, I, I would like to question that. If DOT's own manual suggests that we could have highway travel lane that's only take 10 feet of width, so I guess I just want to point out that I think that there is a conversation that can be had here. And if this board is interested in a different vision, a different model, I would encourage us to, to empower staff to pursue that.
And Jeff, I don't know if you know this, but I suspect these 12-foot travel lanes are based on this section of roadway being in the US highway.
It could be, I don't know.
I know. Probably the industry.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, but I suspect.
One of the figures talked about letting it speak down. And it could be that it's US highway.
Yeah.
That has a difference.
That's Portland, 87. Right? Yeah. Real something for US route to 87. It's a big.
Not just because of the amount of travel lanes, but because of the show, so that you can pull a truck off of 87 to accommodate a breakdown if you're making a truck wreck.
And we haven't seen any alignments or any maps with this section yet.
Never waiting on that meeting?
Yeah.
Do that, that's right. They're going to come public with that.
We think so. One day, so. Phil, it's a survey work that's somebody here, so that I think so.
Yeah. Well, you know, I appreciate, I think you're looking for a more safe environment. I'm very supportive of that. And I think at the same time, we're looking for a physical corridor that's fit enough to be, doing the least amount of damage to existing homes and property owners.
Yes, yes. Yes, you, you put it in a nutshell. Thank you. And, and, and I guess I would add to that, I would like there to be a conversation as well, because I don't, I don't presume to know what that road needs to be. But I, I think we need to think about our vision and our, our desire for that as a gateway. And I think that a part of that will be asking DOT to price different scenarios. So if they can include it in their planning, they will deliver pricing to us.
I think they should. If they can include that, I would definitely want to just do that. And we can do that, that would be, this would be a great alternative to coming in town to all these beautiful trees. I love it. And the bike route. That would be great. But it just depends on how much we have to take in different fareways.
Yes.
Yeah, so I love the tree.
Thank you. Glad to hear that. Yeah, I, I think it'd be really wonderful if this, in the end, was something that looks a good amount of address, but you look out and say, "I'm driving a truck that got hit that way," instead of yet another insult or yet another, um, slide. Well, thank you. What, what I'm understanding is that if this is the desire of the board to see something different besides the black and white priced out, then we need to ask staff to direct the communication to NCDOT.
You want to make that a motion?
Well, what would we include as the alternate concept design? Trees, medians on both sides between the sidewalk and the curb, so that right now I think they've got four feet of grass. We want to eat pizza, you can put a tree in there. And we want that on both sides. Do we want sidewalks on both sides? I certainly don't want to forego sidewalks on both sides. But then I think combining bike lanes on one side. So I think we just made a, probably a decent increase in the roadway cross section width. And if they can play with that to see what it does, then.
But right, that, that right of way is going to increase quite, quite substantially. I wonder what that's going to do to properties.
Unless they're able to use the streets, the complete streets model.
And I think the complete streets model, there are roadway sections that have the bike lane on both sides, have the tree separations and sidewalks. So maybe we can pick up the street and analyze that.
Let me engage you with the, in the next couple of weeks and want to see if, going back with another planning process, if that's what that takes. People have to actually run the models and see if they're on what right of way. May not be the easiest to say, just to, 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 to engage in that.
That'd be great.
And for, for back, you know, um, and if we're, we're going to, if, if they say yes, we do all this, if it's no, maybe I'll come back in a couple of weeks with a different, couple of different cross sections, um, with those. Also, the, the, the streets, that, that, that the type of one being a drug route matters. But it sounds like there's some questions that I can answer over the next couple of weeks, which actually goes forward and, uh, what you want to do next, so.
Yeah, I don't want to be prescriptive.
Yeah, let, let, let me get some work and come back in a couple of weeks and see if there's something.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn.
Thank you, fellow commissioners and mayor.
Well, I think we're at a time now when we want to have a motion to go into closed session, but I'd also, before we go, like to thank Officer Delaney Womack for being with us this evening. She, I believe this is the first time you've been with us?
It is.
And I hope we've entertained you and informed you about.
You got it.
Is there a motion to go into closed session? Moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Jay Farrell. Those in favor, please indicate by single eye. So, motion carries now.